One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Are there concerned citizens on an item not already addressed on the agenda? Hearing none. Item two is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Items three through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the March tenth meeting. Item four is approval of the claim. Item five from board administration is approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for initials J E. Item six from board administration is approval of the Woodbury County Medical Examiner Agreement. Item seven from Human Resources is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And item eight from secondary roads is approval of the permit to work in the right of way for sentry link. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item nine is for information. This was already passed and signed. We are presenting a resolution thanking and commending our very own Donald Groves for his service to Woodbury County. And it reads, whereas Donald Groves is capably, always heard Don Groves, but this is a formal proclamation, so you're Donald. Capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the Sheriff's Department for twenty-four years from May twentieth nineteen ninety-six to March twenty-third twenty-twenty. Whereas the service given by Donald Groves as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commends Donald Groves for his years of service to Woodbury County. Be it further resolved, it is the wish of all those signing below that the future hold only the very best for this very deserving person, Donald Groves. Be it so resolved. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thanks everyone. It's been great while I've been here. Really enjoyed it so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Item ten now from W C I C C and Building Services is for action. This is approval of a data center files fire suppression system project not to exceed fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
John Malloy, W C I C C with Kenny here from Building Services. This is standard ground for me. Kenny did all the work and I'm presenting. What we have, I presented, came to the board here a few months ago regarding our data suppression within the data center. And we have some severe deficiencies and Kenny's been instrumental, exceptional in helping us work through the different issues whether air pressure tests within the, within the department or within the data center, at the electrical, the dampering system, whatever. So what you see in front of you are the, are the codes that we solicited from the different vendors.
Well, I will. The data center for W C I C C has a Halon system in it. The system's outdated. It's got some controls in it that are called blasting caps. And what these do is, these basically pop and open up in the event of a fire. We have some blasting caps that are currently non-working and non-code compliant. It's rather expensive to get those replaced and it's not really a real safe system anyway. So we're recommending that that system be changed to a clean agent system. As part of that, some panel upgrades and controls have to be completed. Some fire dampers have to be installed and some duct work. And again, as John stated, we have to do pressure tests of the areas themselves to bring them into compliance. It's not something that was shocking or a surprise to either John or I, that some of this work would need to be done. And that's why it was put on a C I P. The original C I P was for twenty twenty in the amount of forty thousand dollars. The total quotes that we have with a ten percent contingency fee would be fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty dollars and forty cents. We are asking ten percent contingency fee because I believe that there could be some unknowns that we run into. We're running into so much wiring and so forth that's within W C I C C. We may have some optical, obstacles in front of us. So I did include that ten percent contingency, which is a little bit higher than normally what I would ask for. But again, I believe we might run into some problems. So if there's any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Questions?
Does seem kind of high for what it was. You know, the forty thousand does seem more appropriate, but if that's what your bids are, I think you're.
It is, and our bids were actually pretty close.
Yeah. Somebody advised me to ask for fifty thousand while I was on the board. I asked for it. So that's my mistake.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second by Potavam. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Thank you. Item eleven from conservation is approval of the telecommunications facilities agreement between Woodbury County and FiberCom.
Good timing.
No kidding. Just slid under the wire. This was something that should have been done back in two thousand eighteen. I didn't realize that when Glenn said of you was going through a file, realized that we had him for the museum and for the city of Sioux City and that we needed one with FiberCom. I'd sent that to Mr. Widman and everything looks good. So it's just cleaning up some paperwork and it basically is for them supporting us and doing the one calls. They provide free Wi-Fi for the public out there at the nature center. And in turn they get two black fibers at some point in time they can turn on and use. So I think it's twelve and thirteen fiber numbers. But so I don't think Joshua has anything for it. I do have the agreements.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by DeWitt. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve from secondary roads includes item A, approval of the resolution to establish weight limits on the listed county bridges.
We have two bridges that I requested, or one bridge that I requested further analysis on that's on one of our paved roads. I was able to get it reduced from a nineteen ton two-line posting to basically one legal truck, as long as they run down the middle of the bridge and one truck on it at a time. That's one of the two changes. The other is a result of a collision on a bridge. Our bridge in just east and south of Sergeant Bluff was struck by a car in a collision. Damage was done to one of the compression members. That's diagonal member that goes down to where the bridge seats located. And because of the potential for buckling of that member, the load restriction had to be reduced on that bridge. Basically, it's only a two-ton restriction. Fortunately, the guard rail absorbed most of the damage and protected it. It wasn't as bad as it could have been. Like I actually took and tore off the handrail and knocked it over eighty feet across the creek. It was a spectacular collision if it had been witnessed by anybody. Left the vehicle in the bridge sideways. But I recommend both of the weight resolutions be approved by the board.
I'll move it.
Second the motion by Raddig. No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero.
Also needs to be attested by the county auditor.
Item B is approval of contract with Calhoun Burns and Associates for bridge inspections for calendar year twenty twenty.
Calhoun Burns has been doing our inspections for the last several years. I recommend that we utilize them again for the twenty twenty inspections. They do a very thorough job for us. They're available regularly when we need to have a special evaluation of bridges as we did in the case of this one that was struck in the collision. They had results back to me in three days for reevaluation and reposting.
I will move that.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item C is approval of the plans for project number Perrin C two seven eight.
C two seven eight is a structure on Jewel Avenue. I believe it was the meeting that we had in Pearson with the Pearson City Council. We had the, it's either Pearson or Lawton, I can't remember which one. We had the lady concerned about two bridges on Jewel Avenue, south of D twelve that were both posted and restricted. This is the first of those two bridges to be replaced. This one will be a box culvert replacement of the existing bridge. We're using a precast box to speed the replacement of this structure. This will be followed later this summer with the replacement of bridge C two seventy-four, which is the larger structure that lies north of this bridge. I recommend the bridge plans for approval.
I move approval.
I'll second the motion by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Item D is approval of the plans for project number Perrin six oh one.
Perrin six oh one is the bridge on County Route D twelve. This is a corporate line bridge between Woodbury County and the city of Pearson. We were able to, with city of Pearson's assistance, we were able to get city bridge funds on this one. So these are state funds swapped for federal aid funds that are out of the city pool of money, which frees us up the money for this structure to do one out in the rural area. So the, the assistance of the city of Pearson was vital in, in getting this project up and running and funded. It's an eighty-twenty share, I believe, on this one. Eighty percent of the price is paid by the swap bridge funds. Twenty percent is paid by our farm-to-market fund. I recommend approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now on to item thirteen. So we'll have some potential action items with it. The item states, due to COVID nineteen, the board will be discussing various issues and may take appropriate steps for the protection, safety of both the community and county employees. Yesterday I called an emergency meeting of the department heads and elected officials. Some of the decisions made or agreed to in that meeting are going to be acted upon today in full transparency, which is why we'll receive some different items and I'll explain them. What we discussed was what our county response should be in light of other counties making different decisions from closing to remaining open with very little changes to making specific hours for interactions with the public, to adopting more of an appointment-only approach. And at the end of the day, that's what I think and what I think we all agreed was the best approach is to move to an appointment-only based approach for the county. With the exception of the sheriff's and treasurer's offices. What this means is that the county buildings will remain open to provide essential services and normal services by telephone and by appointment. This will limit the different capacity issues that we have, decrease our liability, increase the potential for more cleaning, more regular cleaning of different areas. Different departments are having their own postings to assure the public that when they have an appointment that's pre-scheduled, the station will be cleaned and the next appointment will then be allowed to take place. This, I believe, is a balanced approach that allows us to react to the reality of this virus while at the same time not contributing to some more of the hysteria that is having a ripple effect in, let's be honest, our entire world economy. So a press release effective today has been distributed or will be distributed today if you've not already received it. I do have a copy for anyone in the media here. Communicating this change effective on Wednesday and until further notice, most Woodbury County offices will require an appointment to conduct business. We are listing the numbers of the different departments to assist people in contacting. A lot of things can be done over the phone, we're finding out, in all of our jobs. So we ask people to utilize those, utilize the websites, especially if you are in a category that is at risk. Our recommendation obviously is to follow C to C guidelines. Do not put yourself in harms way. We also want to reiterate that at this time there are no confirmed cases of COVID nineteen in Woodbury County. We would be notified within twenty-four hours as a community upon the receipt of a positive test to the people that receive that in Woodbury County. So the turnaround time would be very quick. Mr. Auditor, would you think it a good practice to receive the press release into the record simply so there's an area where it can be documented?
Yes.
I'll move to receive the Woodbury County offices COVID nineteen press release written March seventeenth.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. The other consideration discussed yesterday, and this needs to be received in the record because it should take board action, is a memo I constructed to county employees, specifically to Woodbury County employees as what we believe should be our response to our employees that provide vital, essential services to the public. And the, in a nutshell, it is that employees will be, we will take extraordinary measures to make accrued fixed time and other accrued paid time benefits easier to use. Because of the dynamic where if you self-quarantine for any reason, you don't necessarily get a doctor's note. We have to deal with that reality and kind of relax some of our requirements as well as show some compassion for these individuals that may think it's safe to stay home, but also give the flexibility to our departments to ensure that essential staffing is being maintained. And so while this will follow the same procedures for time off requests, what this does is allow employees to use these different buckets, so to speak, of their allowances. Obviously, if state or federal aid is passed and given to local governments, we are tracking this so that we can backfill this, both for the employees' benefit of restoring those hours and for the county's benefit of recouping that money. This is already possible through the time clock system. This can also be made available to the public. So I'll move to receive a memo written by Chairman Ng on March sixteenth regarding COVID nineteen time off and adopting that as county procedure. Second by Raddig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four zero. Thirdly, something that came up was our courthouse security currently is in contact, obviously, with all members of the public that, that enter and our employees. I want to turn it over to Pat who, who has received a question from, from Kevin Green that we may be asked to approve for our courthouse security employees to do some, some screening that businesses may do in their own.
Thank you. I talked with Kevin briefly today about what private businesses are actually asking when people come into their places of business and advising them. We're hoping that it would be truthful, but we're asking that you direct the security staff to ask this question. There also, Kevin said that at some point they're looking at some signage that they can place on the doors for people to be notified when they're coming through. He's going to get that to us too. But we're asking that the security folks ask this just as something to make the public aware that we're concerned about that for our employees and plus the public's safety themselves. So we're asking you to adopt this.
So what this states, if I may read it, is a question phrased by our, our director of Siouxland District Health Department. Do you or any of your family members have a fever, cough, or difficulty breathing right now? If the answer is yes, then let them know that the current recommendation is that sick people stay home and they should call their doctor to be evaluated. Please reschedule an appointment when everyone is healthy again. It's, it's not perfect, but it's something. I, I'd kind of like to hear what other board members have to say about it or, or sheriffs. We're getting a point towards Major Wick. Someone's pointing at you. Thoughts on this?
Todd Wick, Sheriff's Office. I haven't, we haven't discussed doing this yet as far as having our courthouse security personnel, or at least I haven't had any conversation with the sheriff about doing it yet. But I'd be more than happy to take it to him and discuss it with him.
I did have a discussion with him today.
Okay.
He said that whatever the board wanted to do, they would see to it that that happened.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so this is our call as a board. Just like we provide the security, we provide the procedures. Mr. DeWitt.
It is more than obvious that people are coming, they're going to drive downtown, they're going to park their car, they're going to put their sixty cents in the parking meter and they're going to be mad that they already got here and we're going to start asking them questions on whether they got a cough or sniffle. They're going to lie. They're, they're, they're they're not going to want to turn around and go back home. If that's, if that's what the board decides, then that's what we'll do. But there's people walking in with children. There was a lady walked in today with an elderly parent ambling through the courthouse. When obviously the elderly parent should have been left in the car, left at home for that matter. What, what do we have to do to get people to figure out that this is pandemic? I mean, I just don't see people being truthful when they walk in. We also have a language barrier. This is going to be really difficult to enforce. It's going to be very time-consuming. It's going to be very irritating to the people walking in. So.
What do you notice being done if, I mean, is anything, has, have you seen it? If there's someone coming in that doesn't look well, do you, have you questioned them?
For the moment, we are operating with, with nitro gloves. We're sterilizing bowls and buckets between, between visits. We're not handling anybody's phones. We're making them self-place their phone up on the top of the X-ray machine, grab it as soon as they clear the metal detector. There's been grumbling about that. So I don't know if some of the, if some of the protocols getting through security are too easy, I don't know. But on the one hand, I think our job is difficult enough with the grief that we have to put up with on letting people in the building. It's just, like I said, whatever the board decides, it, it will happen, I'm sure, but.
You mean grief related to this virus?
Well, the whole thing. Some, we have people coming in just complaining that they don't think they should go through security. We have people. Had, one lady told me that it was an unconstitutional search to make her walk through a metal detector. You know, this is, this is near daily stuff. So we're in a little bit of uncharted territory here, I think, as far as stopping people going through the security, you know, questioning them. Like I said, the language barrier alone with many of them is, is difficult. So I, I'm struggling with this. I, I believe honestly that, that the security crew in, in conjunction with sheriff's office is doing every possible thing that we can. But we can't, we can't force people to use common sense on entering our building or to even be honest if they, if they're coming in. So with or without a fever, cough, or difficulty breathing or swallowing right now. So.
We will let Dennis in.
I'm struggling with this thing right now. Yeah, here we are in March and seasonal allergies are kicking in. So like I said, this is going to make things a whole lot more time-consuming. And we're trying to be as convenient as we possibly can. But again, if that's what the board, that's what the board wants to pursue, then, then people are going to be irritated and we're going to be the ones that take the brunt of it because they want access to the building that's their county and city and state business done.
I agree. I had the, that's the conversation I had with the sheriff is that people are going to lie. But we're trying to come up with a balance because a lot of counties across the state of Iowa are closing to the public. I think we need some sort of balance. The city of Sioux City is closed for the next two weeks to the public. Their staff is in, their staff is coming in. But we have to have some sort of balance and that's all.
And, and we're in a little bit of a flux because we've got city, county, and state offices in the courthouse. So we, you know, we're all, and the city and the county and state are all handling things in three different fashions. So I, I, I can't wait for this thing to be done. It is challenging at best on a good day.
Once we move to requiring someone visiting a department, an office to have an appointment, I, the walk-in should decrease. We can even have a sign that says, please do not enter unless you have an appointment.
We're just looking for some way that those folks know that they have some responsibility for coming into their courthouse. I don't know what the, the answer is. That's what Kevin talked about yesterday and that's what I followed up with him today and then talked to the sheriff. But, and we talked to our department heads. We're talking about what we're going to do within as far as people that have to come from department to department into ours, our office. Michelle, can you talk about that a little bit, what we're doing there?
Kind of a side issue of what we're doing in the finance side of the auditor's office, and this is the department, department issue. Currently, our claims are brought in in person by every department in the county. So we have people from Cleveland Hill EMS, people that potentially could be exposed to the virus before anybody else. And we have secondary roads from other parts of the county and then all of the county departments that bring their claims in. So we've asked for them to submit those electronically now. So we've asked for them to submit those electronically now, so they'll no longer be coming to our office. If they do have something to bring, we're asking them to put it in an inner office envelope and to put it in our box just inside the office instead of coming through. And we've done a similar thing with our payroll. Every other week, the departments bring in their payroll hours codes and everything so that we can process the payroll, and we're going to have them submit that electronically also. So we're trying to move towards having them submit things electronically so we don't have the department to department people exposed to things, you know, how everything travels, so those are just some of the efforts that we put in play today that we emailed out. The claims process will go into effect next Wednesday, and payroll will go into effect with next week's payroll.
Thank you. Diane, could you talk about the recorder's office, please?
Well, we can live with the appointments, but we also are going to have a sign up that tells them if they do get in and they don't have an appointment, we're only going to allow three different clerks up to the counter at one time. And if there's somebody else out there waiting, they'll just have to wait, and we're going to have one of the staff monitor the door to tell them that. If the courthouse did happen to be called, closed, we could probably do something to have applications at a door, have a drop box or something like that and do it by mail. But for now, I think the staff is pretty comfortable with the way it is. Everybody's chipping in and as a real trooper, so I think it'll be okay.
Right.
We also talked about just training our staff to be responsible themselves as far as keeping the work areas clean and keep themselves. Dave, did you have something or?
No, I just wanted to hear if I could still, the documents from my.
Yeah, I think.
So the last two days, have you seen a decrease in traffic to the recorder's office or? Okay.
No, the star on your license, driver's licenses, I'm thinking is at least one of the things that's keeping people coming in in droves on that deal alone, so. And I'm I'm here to tell you signs don't work. We got. Signs don't work.
I think that's the reason this is being phrased as a question from a human being.
Well, true, but I mean, I.
Yeah, that's, we agree on that. And the other thing that we held a press conference this morning to talk about elections. We have a special election coming up, and that's something that, you know, is going to upset people too, because we have a lot of people who do in-person early voting and we're just, and we sent out a mailing when I'm telling people to vote at home. We don't want, you know, we're just telling them it goes against my grain because we want people to participate, to vote, but we're telling them we don't want them to use either facility. We don't want them coming into the courthouse to vote early in person. We want them to vote at home, vote by mail. We've, we went from, we were planning, we had it all set up for 28 polling places for the special election. We've reduced it to two vote centers now, and we've sent the same thing and a message that, the mailing that is going out today is to tell them that the only reason that we want them to go to the, either one of those vote centers on Election Day is if they're unregistered or they have some sort of a registration issue or after something went wrong with their absentee ballot. But we're trying to, we're just trying to restrict that, access to that. We want to protect voters and we want to protect our precinct election officials and we want to protect our staff within the office, so this is just, times are different today and we have to, we have to accept responsibility and so do the people frequent who use our services.
So when does absentee start on that?
We won't have, the filing period is Friday for the special election, and that's when we can order ballots. On Monday, we'll be in order in ballots, and as soon as they get to us, as soon as the ballots are prepared, that's when absentee voting starts. We will, we've already got some requests in. We will fulfill those as soon as we can, but the mailing is going out. It has personalized absentee request forms for every active voter of Woodbury County, and we anticipate, we hope that they they use them, and we hope that this might even increase turnout if people pay attention and they are aware of this election.
So you're talking like the 24th likely?
Right. Well, no, it'll be late in the week. 25th is Wednesday, I believe. It'll be.
You mail out those requests usually what? Is it two weeks before or?
Four weeks before usually, and that's what we're doing this time is four weeks before, is we send them out for a week to go out, a week for the request to come back.
So you mail them out today?
This week, we are sending them out, right.
Okay.
But like I said, we're trying to get some sort of balance here is that, because we don't want folks just coming through the doors thinking that business as usual.
I'd love to tell you about the treasurer's office. Would you like to hear?
Yes.
Mike Clayton, treasurer. I just came from a meeting with all my staff. They they called the meeting. You've read the book or heard about the book, Mutiny on the Bounty? I was basically told that I don't care about my employees unless I close the office completely, so when we left, I said, well, the county's been very generous and we've offered to give you, use any kind of time you want to take time off if you feel like you can't come to work, and that wasn't good enough because none of them have any time off because they use it all, all the time anyway. So anyway, it all boiled down to I'm the bad guy and I don't, I hate my employees. Other than that, we're going to operate eight, 4:30 like normal. We're going to keep the door locked. We're going to let people in a few at a time. When they're taken care of, we'll clean all of our surfaces off and send them out and let a few more in, operate that way.
You have a drive-up.
We have a drive-up, but that's only good for renewals and for dropping off your tax payments. You can't do title transfers at drive-up. You know, you'd be backed up down to, down to the hard rock down there if you tried to do title transfers.
But you haven't posed the limit of 10?
Well, I think we're even going to drop it lower than that because we're probably not ever going to have, if if everybody that, you know, is in the mutiny doesn't come to work tomorrow, I'll have to close anyway because I won't have enough staff. We'll see how that works out. We're going to continue on. The only thing is we don't know how we're going to handle our anthony office yet. There's only one person over there, so that's kind of hard for that person to go close the door and lock it and then let somebody in and then lock it behind them and then now with them going and locking it, but no, wait for somebody else, so it's.
Do they ever get much more than two people in a time?
Oh, yeah. This time of year, they'll have a lobby. So, but we'll get, we'll work through that too, so dealers are going to be cut off from coming in the office. We're just going to drop stuff off at the drive-up window and then we'll disperse it out. That'll slow down a little bit of traffic that way. I don't know where we're going to put everybody that can't get in because we have a lobby full of 50 people usually. If I'm only at three or four in, the other 47 or whatever have to stand outside, I don't know, but that's their problem, I guess. Encourage online. I don't know why anybody wouldn't want to do it online. It costs a whole quarter to do it online. The parking meter is a quarter.
Now, maybe that's where a sign would come in handy, maybe somebody would want to read that sign if they're waiting.
I was reminded a few minutes ago that.
People don't read signs.
People don't read signs, and even when we've told them that the treasurer's office has been up the street for four years, the, I just let the guy go and be convinced when he got in there.
We've had on our, on our, on our envelopes that go out to renew online. That's been on there for as long as we've been sending out tax statements and we've been online, so they don't read. Anyway, that's where we're at for now. Like I say, unless people don't show up and I can't open the office, then we'll be closed, but I'm sure you'll hear about that.
So there was mention of a sign at the front door saying if you don't have an appointment, you need to call. Are you going to put one up like that?
I think we should.
You'd probably want to put the numbers for the departments.
Yeah.
Right.
On that sign.
And that's honestly, maybe one way to be less intrusive Supervisor DeWitt is, you know, normally I know you ask, do you know where you're going?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
You have an appointment because they need one. They say no, well, you need an appointment. You better call and come back.
Are the courts in session?
No, they are not having hearings nor, unless it's already in the pipes, they're not doing any court cases, no juries. I actually have jury duty next week, but I was informed they probably won't have any until after the first of April to resume on that, so so that. So I'm off the hook on that. I don't get to do my civic duty, I should say, and but, yeah, those kind of things with, on the state side have been, have been shut down if not, or postponed if not shut
What do you guys, what do you two think on the question?
I don't think it's asking too much of them as a question. They can do it as a group question to, if they have a group of people waiting to put their stuff on the conveyor belt. Are they going to lie? If they lie, that's their decision, not ours. But I think we have to do our share to try to help alleviate the problem. And yeah, one more question you have to ask, but I don't think it's, it's not like we're asking them to recite the Gettysburg Address. When you hand them the bowl to put their stuff in, you can say this as they're doing
Do you have an appointment? Sounds like a fair question. I don't know if you need to ask anything else.
Do you have, make appointments at the furniture store?
No.
Yeah.
People come in and buy furniture.
Just curious.
Sold plenty today. Sold plenty yesterday.
Well, they are staying home, so. Can we recommend and would the recommendation, is some sort of consensus be received to just, if you see someone that looks unwell, say something like, obviously, are you sick?
I had a, I had a conversation with our county attorney today. He said if we're going to ask any question, it has to be consistent and asked of everyone that comes through.
You don't want to start picking and choosing who you're going to ask the question.
Yep.
Is there Supervisor DeWitt, is there anything that you would recommend?
Frankly, I'm leaning toward closing the courthouse for a week, maybe two. I I am. I don't, I don't like that idea because that's interfering with everything, like I said, from city, county, to state. I mean, we have domestics, we have all kinds of people, all manner of people coming in, paying fines on their, on their caps program, the whole thing. I I it, I cringe to think of shutting that stuff off, especially the CSADV and the and the domestic kind of stuff, especially now that people are supposed to be stranded at home. But if I was going to recommend something, I would say a one-week test run on just close the courthouse.
Personally, I'm not on on par with that. Again, zero confirmed cases in our county, and I think that might make me rethink that kind of drastic of a move.
I think Dave would be up the microphone if you, if you went along with that, but I'm also going to tell you that Secretary of State's office has told us this is a week that we cannot close. We have filing deadlines. We have filing deadlines for the special election. We have filing deadlines for, both on the 20th for people who are nominated by petition, and then the 25th, we have filing deadlines for county offices. So they've told us that we cannot close. We we can make appointments as what we have outlined, but we cannot close.
Well, I don't want to close. I don't, I don't think three of us don't want to close. We'd, we'd obviously wouldn't close every county function, even if we did close, because there's essential personnel, there's law enforcement, there's, there's things like that, and each department, you know, in order to not go back to the stone age when we come back, someone has to key things in or at least stay current on deadlines and things like that, process payments these, these sick days. Then we have to decide in each department who is essential, and I don't know if the federal government already has that formula worked out, but we all know when there's a shutdown, there's all this drama, but it's really only less than 20% of the government actually shuts down. Everybody's essential. County government has, yes, a lot of, some offices and employees could, could work from home. We're exploring, you know, directors may need to do that. At this point, we may have departments come to the board in future meetings and say this position should be eligible to work from home, and we'll work through that. But as Pat said, there's, it's exacerbating the problem to, to pile on to the, to the disruptions in the society. Somebody has to keep working to pay for all of these bailouts that are coming. So I don't think that's an option right now.
I'd like to make a comment, Frank.
Yeah, please.
One thing that I like to try to, we're here to do the people's business. Technically, that's who we work for, and so if it's a little inconvenient for us, I would rather be that than to make it very inconvenient for the people trying to do business here because this is their place of doing business, and that's what we're here for. You know, I don't want to make it overly hard on our employees either, but, you know, she said there have been troopers, they stepped right up and they're getting ready to do it. That's kind of what I expect in a, in a difficult situation of our people to do. If it's a little inconvenient, I'm sorry, it'll come to an end at a time. Don't know when, but it will come to an end.
We don't know what we'll be meeting about next week. Maybe there'll be some federal mandate or state Supreme Court order or something that we'll have to react to and digest, but at this time, I think we're helping more by not adding to the panic and continuing to allow our employees to serve the public in a way that makes sense, given the situation.
So instead of asking that question, how about the question, do you have an appointment? Would that be?
Well, I'm, I mean, frankly, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a short list of questions. I just don't think, because we already established that we're going to try the, try the appointment thing, so then do we ask, do you have an appointment? Then do we ask, do you or any family members have a fever, cough, or? So I'm, like I said, I, I not beating on the desk trying to get us to close down the courthouse for a week or two. I understand that we're, we're three entities here, city, county, and state. You asked for suggestions, I gave one. I'm not, I, then at this time, let's figure out what these questions are going to be and and put it in stone because, like I said, I foresee people being, feel they're being hindered and about going about their daily business, as Mr. Potabom says, and they're just going to have to, have to eat it.
Why wouldn't?
Because we have removed people from the building just for being belligerent too, so.
Just require you guys to ask the, do you have an appointment? But when they call to make their appointment with whomever they're discussing, why not have them ask the question, have any of you had fever or anything?
Well, if the appointment can't be for three days, then all of a sudden they develop a sniffle, is that going to change the fact that they're coming in or not?
Well, I'm pretty sure you'd be able to get them in. But yeah, that's the question they'd ask, and I guess they could make the statement if you come up with a fever. Please call and re, you know.
What? No. No.
Do you guys have something back there?
We have a questionnaire that we can use, and I just sent it to PJ. We just didn't realize this had progressed this fast. We were going to have him vet it.
Questionnaire? You said a question air or a question?
Well, in the absence of that, I'm sure building services can work up a sign that says if you have these symptoms or maybe there's something available being sold. says if you have these symptoms, or maybe there's something available being sold, COVID-19 posters. In the meantime, we can, you can direct them to, I don't know, ask them if they've read the sign. I, I don't, I mean, a two-two vote would fail to, uh, to ask these, this health question. Maybe we can vet the questionnaire through the county attorney and reevaluate that next week, or even sooner, we can call a meeting if we need to. But in the meantime, I do think that asking if you have an appointment follows current county policy as of tomorrow, and so I think it's necessary to require entrance to state their appointment time and office. You'll ask, "Do they have an appointment?", "Where is it with?"
So, and then, um, Treasurers Department, if title transfers are the only things that have to be done in there, why can't you just only do title transfers only in there, and then do all renewals either through drive-through or online?
Well, you can't make anybody do it online.
No, I, I know you can't, but they have the drive-through option on the renewal, right?
They would have, yes.
So there you go.
Unless you rode the bus.
Renewal, yeah. Renewals only through drive-through or online?
We can try all that. You know, we're just gonna have to see what happens.
Title transfer only in person.
We're just gonna see what happens. Now, you're gonna have Sioux City PD saying, "Why is your traffic backed up down to the Wiener Shop?"
At the window, you're...
Back down to Seventh Street before on a normal end of the month.
At the window, you can only serve one customer at a time.
Correct.
Yeah. Or inside, you've got several...
Right.
Well, online, you can serve a thousand.
You gotta understand, too, at tax time, we only send out one statement in September. So in March, nobody brings in their stubs. So if they don't have a stub when they come to the window, then we can't trans, we can't do it there. We have to print a stub, so they have to come inside, print the stub, even if they just wanna make a payment for their taxes, they have to come inside.
So you're talking property taxes?
Property taxes, that's correct. That's correct. Renewals, motor vehicle renewals, they can give us their license plate number if they even know that, and we can do that.
I just thought we were talking about the license side of things, but yeah, if you're talking property taxes.
Well, that's, I don't, the motor vehicle side is not gonna be an issue, this is the tax side's gonna be the issue.
Okay.
And then, on the motor vehicle side, the only thing that's gonna be an issue is the title transfers, or the replacement titles, or plates, picking up their personalized plates, or where they lost, or whatever else that requires an actual in-office visit.
Okay. PJ, did you have something?
Not really, but I'll just mention that, um, I, I think it's good that we're having this discussion. I like the idea of at least asking a question, because then at least they will get an idea of how this thing might work, in case we need to broaden this, add personnel, whatever it may take. But I would caution that, once we get a confirmed case here, and I say, "Once we get it," because I do believe we are going to get it, I think things are gonna change, and I know people don't like the idea of closing the buildings, but that might be a requirement. It's not necessarily meaning that we're shutting off the employees, employees may still come to work, we're just not letting the public in, just similar to City Hall. That might be a requirement, we may need to work around it, except a few exceptions, such as elections that have to go on for whatever the purposes are, and we may need to broaden that scope of who gets in here, but there may not be an option to closing the building, or shutting the building down. We're not closing the building, but we may be shutting it down.
Okay, then my next question is, what if they walk in and they're obviously coughing, sneezing, hacking, doing whatever, and they say, "No, I'm not sick." What are we gonna do? Am I gonna say, "Yeah, you are, you gotta leave"?
Hand them a mask.
Do you have power to deny access?
I do.
Okay, then you can say you deny access. You can deny your access.
I know, it sounds easy, but, but then when I, if I gotta go hands-on and drag them out, now I'm sitting there... Well, I'm, I'm asking a legitimate question, because we will have that. Dave, if you're gonna talk, come up the podium.
If you, if you shut the courthouse down and still do business, I don't have a problem. I, I work for an abstract company, and my main concern is the closing companies and the banks are wanting to file their mortgages to get the lien on, because they want that first lien, and you know how that works. And that's their main question. The appointment only, I can call Diane and say, "Hey, I'm gonna bring some papers over at 11:30, that's fine by me also." I have no problem.
Right, no, and that's, that is, I think your situation is unique enough and easily, easily handled enough with, with appointments. You can come in and make a, I see you come in and out all the time. You're not often in there for an hour and a half, you're in there for twenty minutes, maybe at the most, and whatever, but...
I've requested that the companies we work with, the e-file all the ti, all their documents, so I don't have to come over here as much as I really have to, but, uh, still, I have to come over to the clerk's office. I've talked to them today, and they don't, you know, if they have to pull files and bring them to the do, the door to me, I guess that's what they'll have to do, but that's a state deal.
Right, 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 that's exactly part of it, so...
But you still have to get in the building.
Well, they can hand it to you at the door. They can throw it out the window. I, I, but I'm, I'm just, if you're still doing business, and you shut the doors to the public, you're still gonna run business in here, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I don't see why you couldn't...
As long as we have staff.
Yeah, I don't, isn't that what the city's doing, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything wrong with that, but, for, on my end, I mean, that's just my end, but...
Voter registration and the things that we've gotta do this time...
But if they, if they have the, like, I, if they have the ability to deny somebody in there, and if they think they're really sick, I, I don't see any reason to deny them access, but...
Say that again?
If you deny, if you see somebody that's sick, and you say, "I can't allow access to the building at this, you know, pandemic," or whatever you wanna call it, that, that's the choice, they have to, they have to leave, that's your choice, I would believe. That's why you're there, is it not?
Major Wick?
Question is, why are you here?
If the guy, if they see somebody sick, if they see somebody sick, and they, and they, you know, wanna give them access to the courthouse, they're gonna deny access to the courthouse.
In our office, every single day of every single week, we have somebody sick, hacking at us, sneezing, snotty fingers.
That's our world, too.
Every single day.
Yeah, we do, too.
What are you gonna say? Do you have allergies? Could be allergies they have, I don't know, but you haven't, you haven't denied them access before. We've had all that girl stuff, so...
I had one freak out the other day, because the woman came in, still had her hospital bracelet on, and the treasurer, in the treasurer's office, people don't always pay, you know, they don't take, like, common sense. They get a bill, they just don't pay it, they wait till the very end of the month, especially taxes. And when they were in here in the courthouse, it was just, there was all kinds of people. At the end of the, uh, was it March 30th, or September 30th? I mean, they're running, they're running people in and out there, but if, if the business doesn't stop, that doesn't bother me, if you shut the doors. I'll figure a way to get e-file and, and stuff from the clerk.
Right, but...
But I, and, and, and you, you guys are, I'm, I'm always pro-law, so you say you're denying access to a building, you deny, but how do you remove them? How do you remove somebody like that?
Physically.
Who wants to touch it?
Again, I, I just wanna caution against...
Follow-up question.
Too many of the what-ifs, because we aren't doctors, people do have allergies. I sneeze, it's big-time allergy season for me, and I'm sneezing and coughing, um, but we aren't doctors, and so if that case comes up, or it arises, we'll have to deal with it. We can't make a carte blanche statement that they won't get in. Again, it might precipitate the need to, to shut the building down, I mean, if we start getting those cases, but that's a question for later. We don't wanna say we're kicking people out 'cause they're sneezing.
I think people will figure out real fast, if everyone's handing them a squirt of hand sanitizer and keeping their distance, hopefully some of that common sense is allowed to blossom in our community.
Could you ask that follow-up question, then, Rocky? Have you ever been tased?
That would actually work, I think. So, in order to make some progress, I'll move to, uh...
Can I say one more thing?
Sorry, yeah.
If someone comes in and Rocky says, "Do you have an appointment?", and they say, "No, I don't," if they have a cellphone, have them call right then, right there for a copy, as we'll make it work, we'll make it work.
They don't have to leave, they can call from there.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be informed...
No, we're not letting them use our phone, Marty.
They'll be informed that they need to make that appointment before they progress.
Advised against.
No, their phone, their own cellphone.
Yeah, that, but not ours.
So I'll move that, until further notice, courthouse security will ask all incoming citizens, "Do you have an appointment?"
I'll second that.
Second by Ratic. The follow-ups will obviously depend upon the answer, and will match county policy that there, an appointment is required to progress. Any other discussion?
When will we shut this off, or do we have a somewhat shut-off time to this, and when the CDC or the Siouxland District Health clears it, Governor clears it, what might be the end game? What might be the light at the end of the tunnel?
We do review it in two weeks, I mean, that's what everyone's putting that number out there, two weeks.
Can we add that to the motion?
Could be reviewed in two weeks?
All right.
What was it?
Require courthouse security to ask all incoming citizens, "Do you have an appointment?" For the next two weeks. Keeping in mind the Governor's proclamation lasts for 30 days, and prohibitions against other types of gatherings last to the end of the month, ten people, so until further notice, I think was just fine, but we can, we'll be talking about this other time, it's over, so I don't have a problem with talking about it in two weeks.
Two weeks is the end of the month.
Any other discussion? Any reason why that's not workable? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First and a, passes four zero. We've taken three actions. That's all we, that I had planned, but if there's anything that comes up now, we can take action on that as an emergency item. So with that, are there any questions or thoughts from any of us?
The other comment, the Nature Center's closed, so, not essential.
They notified separately.
So we're not gonna follow the, "Do you have, or any family members have fever, cough, or breathing difficulties?"
I think we would recommend those that are maybe making the appointments to do that. If you think about it, yes, while you're making the appointments.
At the end of the day, signs don't work, telling people lie, mostly doesn't work. People are being notified, bombarded, probably more than any other single issue in their lifetime, about if you don't, if you feel unwell, stay home. I mean, their fast-food restaurant is emailing them that, so I don't think we're gonna make any difference here in the phrasing of questions, other than to set policies, which is that we are limiting capacity in order to allow, the reason is, we are allowing ourselves the time to clean the surfaces and the areas where customers are coming in and utilizing appointments. And if people see that being done, they're out on the, on the counters, it's being done after every person, I think that adds some confidence, you know, because all of the, there's gonna be a lot of changes made to accommodate the economic downfall we're going through, and where do you think that's gonna be processed, if not local governments? So we have to do what we have to do, and we're making it more flexible for our employees to, to take time off if they need to, for a host of reasons, and the reason we can be that flexible is because we've decided to remain open for essential services. Once we make the call to close, or, it, it's a different, it's a different dynamic. I don't wanna go there right now. Just a point of personal privilege, I guess, just a thought, we've, uh, if there's one, if there's a silver lining to all this, we've certainly, you know, we hear about different, different types of jobs being thankless jobs, you know, you have a thankless job, I have a thankless job. Think about these people, they have thanksless, thankless jobs. I think what this is exposed to all of us as a nation is that we're getting a lot more acquainted and appreciative of what everyone else's job is. We understand that we rely upon each other, and I think that's a gift that we should remember. If we remember things after this, I hope we remember things after this. But just thank someone for what they do. Even, obviously thank an officer, thank a nurse, but beyond that, thank the person who filed something for you. Just thank people that are doing their jobs. Anyone else? All right. Item 14 is reports on committee meetings.
So they're either canceled, or we gotta call in and... We are on workforce development, asking for moving the deadline further back, because we were given a June 1 deadline of having our new workforce development region created with the new board all nominated, as far as the citizen board, uh, but seeing how we were gonna have counties, counties, we pushed off the 2018, and, uh, well, the other founding documents of the organization, so that, of course, that pushes up, nominating people to the board and everything else that we would have done, and we were looking at every couple of weeks, but now, uh, you know, not everybody wants to be a lead at all, so it's kinda created a difficulty in getting to that deadline of workforce development, which I think is important, because if anything, we're gonna need workforce development, that is figured out, especially because, you know, that's probably the biggest question of the government as well, and it's important for our region to get people, you know, who are maybe underemployed, or, uh, you know, missing the skills gap, into those positions, getting the training they need, so... On another note, too, on the economic development side, they're asking for businesses that aren't hurting due to this, which I think there will be a lot more of that, basically, uh, us, but businesses that we have hired, we need to...
Any other reports? Item 15, any citizen concerns?
Hello, I'm Brett Hare with the Sioux City Journal. Um, wasn't sure whether to raise this now, or when you were having an discussion, but I did, I was slowing down the recording, but, um, I was asked by an editor and by a interested reporter who sits next to me, who's a courthouse reporter, about the appointment system. There's a guy who comes to basically every trial that's on Tuesday, comes and gets records from the courthouse, at least twice a week. Is that the type of thing that's appointment-type basis? For our own, for our own...
Who, who would he lead with?
Your, your guy?
Those, gets marriage licenses, things like that, public records from various...
Diane?
Just had him show probably his press passers... Just have him show probably his press pass or something.
This is a guy that you see all the time.
Okay, okay.
I think, just, I think just, you know, they don't want to be surprised by walk-ins if it's a, a known person.
I know, okay.
Yeah, if it's a known.
I think everybody groaned when he said Nick.
No, I'm just kidding. Basically a continuous appointment, you know, if we know when, when they're coming and to expect them, thanks for the clarification. Any other citizen concerns? Any board concerns, item 16?
Could we have someone draw us up a list of the offices that, with phone numbers so we can direct them to the right people as soon as possible?
Karen would be happy.
Recorders, auditors. At least all of the.
I think that's contained in the press release from Rebecca Sock. That is, she has a list of numbers for appointments and the rest of them can be found on the county website.
Well, we're talking about while they're standing right there and wanting to make an appointment or if they didn't get, so.
City, county assessor, elections department?
We, yeah, we'll work on that, Rocky.
Thank you.
Supervisor DeWitt.
Any other board concerns? See you all next week. Adhere.